Meal crisis, but first we're going to get our strategic plan update. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Robinson, Dr. McMillan, Dr. Payne, Dr. Alfred Keith, and Dr. Nash and Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Chairman Haffey, Vice Chair Haggerty, esteemed Board members, and Superintendent Moore. It is with humble enthusiasm and excitement I present the final draft of our strategic plan this afternoon. Before proceeding, I would like to express our deepest gratitude towards Mr. Martin and Dr. Nash for their invaluable support and guidance throughout the entire development process. Their expertise and insights have been invaluable and continue to shape our work in profound ways. To the students, parents, teachers, administrators, and community members who actively engage in this process, contributing their insights and ideas. Their involvement and contributions have helped us create a plan that truly represents our collective aspirations. To the superintendent leadership team and work group leads, none of this would have been possible without your unwavering commitment and dedication. I also want to express my sincere appreciation to each of you for reviewing the information thoroughly, providing critical feedback, and holding us accountable to high expectations and high standards. And to the strategic planning core team, thank you, thank you, and thank you for your relentless dedication and countless hours of work. Together, we have achieved a significant milestone, and I am honored to work alongside such exceptional individuals. During our time together this afternoon, we would like to accomplish three things. One, we want to provide a brief overview of the plan. Two, we want to review the final edits. And then, three, we would like to discuss next steps to make our plan a reality. As you are aware, we approach this work with the understanding and willingness to be bold by pushing the boundaries of excellence to be inclusive of all, to ensure that every student graduates from Wade County Public School System is prepared, confident, and ready to reach their full potential and beyond and lead productive lives in a complex and changing world. This slide is a reminder of the outline goals, aims, and related metrics for each priority. In total, there are seven goals, 20 aims, and a list of related metrics for each priority. You had an opportunity to review this in dev during our board work session in April. Based upon your input and feedback, updates have been made, which will be discussed in the upcoming slides. We have four recommitments in this plan. We are recommitting to our core academics, the four Cs, family and community engagement, and high-quality staff. We also have three new areas of focus, which are bringing a new level of focus to equity, student well-being, and effective operations. So, we are seeking approval on the goals, metric, and aims during our board meeting tonight. But before doing so, we would like to provide an overview of the edits that have been made based upon your previous feedback and provide an opportunity for board members to ask clarifying questions or make additional recommendations for considerations. There are four types of changes we have made to the plan based upon your feedback. Graduation rate goal, balancing ambition and feasibility, additional key metrics, talks about community listening, ELCs, PLCs, and data, and other data metrics as well. We also talked about increasing the specificity around language and the alignment between the aims. And in addition, we added the addition of Aim 20, which is about balancing operational efficiency, fiscal responsibility, and environmental sustainability. So the first thing that I would like to touch upon is I'm going to touch upon the graduation rate goal, and then I would like to pause and allow you to provide or ask any type of questions you would have at that particular time to make sure that there is some alignment and consistency on that. And then I would like to have LeAnn go over the actual edits within the plan so you can see exactly where they are. So when we talked about balancing ambition and feasibility, this was a shift that was directly in response to your feedback. So, the 98% that we had shifted to was calculated by combining the number of students that typically receive attendance certificates and the number of students that received an associate's degree in a five-year program. Based upon our calculation, this is approximately 230 students. We divided 230 by the typical number in a graduating class, which ranges from 12,000 to 14,000 students. The range of students that do not graduate in a four-year cohort is approximately 1.6 to 1.8%. So we took 100% minus the 1.8%, which gave us 98.2%. The 98% captures every student that should graduate in a four-year cohort. And if we're able to achieve this, which is going to mean that we will have no dropouts. I would like Dr. McMillan just to touch upon the five-year portion of it to make sure that there's clarity and understanding.
Sure. So as far as the 2% of students that are not, that would add up to the 100 here, we just tried to list a couple of examples of reasons why that would happen. Students who are experiencing extended content standards, who are usually students with very significant cognitive disabilities, often receive a certificate of attendance, which is not necessarily a diploma, and in the state's business rules and accounting rules for these things, those students are not counted as graduates. And then the other example we provided to talk about who those 1 to 8, 1 to 2% are, we have early college students who are supposed to be in school for five years, and at the end of those five years, they have a high school diploma, and then they also have an associate's degree presumably. Beginning next year, if students don't complete all of their high school requirements by the end of that fourth year, let's say one of those credits happens to spill over into their fifth year, even if they finish that fifth year with the diploma and the associate's degree, they're not going to be counted as on-time graduates because it took them more than the four years to do the high school portion of the early college program. So they're doing what they set out to do, but due to some of the accounting rules, they could end up not getting counted as graduates for us, and so that's why we're trying to account for those types of just kind of rare situations in that bucket there.
Thank you. So what I wanted to do is just pause for a minute just to be able to provide the board an opportunity to ask any clarifying questions or any recommendations for consideration because when we're at 100%, we really talked about balancing ambition and feasibility, and we believe shifting from 100% to 98% with the understanding that this would mean there would be no dropouts, and it has accountability with regards to the two types of students that we clarified that will receive certificates and those that have a five-year graduation cohort. So are there any questions, comments, concerns, or considerations, or any thoughts?
Ms. Water? I just appreciate the thoughtfulness that you went through in the steps to get to that percentage that recognize our students who come to us and whose outcome is different, but whose work is still valuable, so thank you for going through those extra steps.
Absolutely, thank you.
Can you talk us through the going with the four-year versus the five-year graduation rate?
Okay, when you said the word going with the four-year versus the five-year, can you clarify what you mean by that?
So the thought behind going with the four-year cohort versus, I know sometimes when we look at graduation scores, we'll wait for the five-year and then add on to that to give the graduation rate.
Absolutely, and LeAnn and Racken chiming in as well. So we want the four-year graduation rate because that's the state accountability measure within a four-year cohort.
That's perfect, that's all I needed to clarify.
We will continue to report the five-year rate that we always have.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on this comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, but more of a comment. Certainly, I have to say, I appreciate the confidence in which you all spoke about taking into consideration some of the uncertainty about if we could do this, but I also appreciate that the certainty also allowed your entire team to push us to be clear that this isn't about moving kids through a system without accountability. This is really our accountability. Our job is to be accountable when we say appearance, they enter our schools and kindergarten. Our job is to get them through our students ready on the outside, on the other side of that 13th year, if they're with us K-12, that they're ready for productive citizenship, jobs, career, or military. And so when I was listening to you, I was like, we haven't really said it this way, and I think for me, just like everybody else, it was a hard pill to swallow, but what you said to me, this is your accountability, I think that was the switch for me. So I think it might be more true of other people who haven't had that click, that this isn't about pushing kids, this is saying to Wade County Public School, staff, employees, educators, and board, we are accountable to what we say in appearance, and we'll try to do it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Which is still hard.
So at this time, I do want to pause, and I want to give an opportunity to the edits that have been made, just to make sure that everybody is aware of where they are and how they're identified. And so, pass that out, and LeAnn is going to walk you through it.
Yes, so we're passing around now a copy that has edits highlighted in red so that you can see those, and we're going to walk through all of the changes. All of these changes came from your input at the work session, so we just wanted to highlight for you where they are. There are no changes to pages one through four. Those are all the same as what you saw previously in April. On page five, you will see that first change of the 98% and the graduation rate goal that we were just discussing. On page six, you will see in those metrics for priority one that we have clarified the language around CTE completers, that we do measure that as a percent of all students who have completed that CTE pathway. The end-of-course assessments, we have included all end-of-course assessments just so that we can be really transparent in how we're looking at all of those high school measures for that level of accountability for our graduation rate goal as Ms. Johnson-Husser was just describing. Then in teacher professional learning, you can see that we have included that teacher survey data on their PLCs and their other professional learning that they receive so that we have that qualitative measure along with the quantitative.
Just to clarify for everybody listening as well, this is a backup that's in simply what was handed out at the table for anybody that's watching.
That's right, thank you. And then, page seven, you will see changes to the aims for priority one. We clarified the language in aim four just to be more specific for the disparities that we want to eliminate are over and under representation in special education and advanced coursework for race, ethnicity, and gender. Then in aims six and seven, we added some additional language to be more clear there as well. We want consistent information about family involvement opportunities. A lot of your feedback there was about increasing consistency amongst our schools, and that information shared with that aim. And then aim seven, we added "and" unique needs to honor the fact that we know that families and students each have unique needs, so as we're collaborating, we want to honor those. There are no changes on page eight. On page nine, we clarified some of those metrics as well. Same theme here, just trying to be more specific. So specialized support personnel, just to call out specifically which staff we're talking about, as we know, reaching those national recommended ratios is really important. Then mental health referrals, there are several ways that we measure that through the behavioral health needs assessment, so we wanted to be inclusive of all those measures. That includes alliance health referrals, that includes suicide screening, threat assessments, and all different types of measures that are in the behavioral health needs assessment. Then on page 10, you can see a couple tweaks to the aims in priority two. The adjustment to aim 10 is very similar to the one in aim four, we just want to be very specific about the disparities that we are eliminating, in this case, overrepresentation by ethnicity, gender, and race, and referral suspensions, and absences. In aim 12, we added additional specificity there as well, that we want to build strong relationships among staff, families, and community organizations in order to share resources and promote well-being, so that's a connection back to that priority two of student disposition and well-being. There are no changes on page 11. On page 12, we added one additional metric, again, expanding our qualitative data here, making clear that we're going to use information that we gather in community listening sessions to make sure that the information that's gathered in our decisions is representative of all of our populations of students and community. And then on page 13, you see an adjustment to aim 15, again, being more specific that we want to recruit, hire, develop, and retain diverse instructional and non-instructural staff. Aim 17, adding the word "continuous" because we know that high quality and equitable access to facilities and technology is something that will always be ongoing, that we will never quite get there with that aim. Aim 19, we want to ensure safe, timely, efficient, and reliable transportation services, again, just being more specific with our language. And then you can see there the addition of aim 20 to establish new processes and guidelines that balance operational efficiency, responsibility, and environmental sustainability. And then on that last page, you see the added glance with all of the changes to the aims highlighted. So we'll pause there for any questions that you have.
And just to go back to aim 20, just to make sure, reiterate, it was elevated to a line of what you said, just to make sure that we share that with you.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Parker?
On page seven, this is aim four. I was reading this before, and you have over-representation, under-representation. Can you explain over-representation in special ed?
Yes. Yes, so currently, we see that students who are black or male or identify as a special education more than students of other races or female students, so that's an example that we have over-representation in special education by race and gender. And then, under-representation, we see similar patterns there where we do not see enough of our black or Latinx students who are taking our advanced coursework or identified as AIG. So that's what we mean there when we say over or under-representation.
So the over, okay, so I get the second part. The first part, are we saying that there is more black and male in special ed?
Yes, currently, there is.
So as a part of accepting federal funds for special education services, they do produce disparity reports, and the reports tell us that based on our population of African-American male students, the percentage of those students that are referred and/or who have an IEP is overrepresented based on the percent of students they represent in the district versus other groups. It's more, but it's a percentage more, numbers as well, probably, but it's really about percentages when you disaggregate all the groups that we have in the district.
There's a body of research that, you know, it's easier to identify young men or boys that have ADHD or autism over, you know, female representation will get diagnosed later, so, you know, there's multiple ways, but I think that report is a great way of making sure that we're...
Was that more of a how-to verify that we're doing the proper screening for everybody? Is that what that's...
It's screening, it's services, it's...
It's equalities.
It's understanding that sometimes, and I'll give you one specific area, for students who are identified with behavioral needs that end up with an IEP, those are disproportionately black and brown males. And so there is something to be said, and research that has occurred around understanding how we train the adults in the buildings to understand what's going on with students and dig a little deeper than just the behavior, which is a manifestation of something else. So where's it coming from, what's the background, and how can we help identify tools, practices that provide support for the student in the classroom that doesn't end up in a referral for special education services?
I was just trying to understand because I know that there are parents that have complained how hard they tried to get their student services and put the screening process, like they're told whether they qualify or not, so I was just curious how you get an over-representation. I mean, I would assume if your child has special needs, then you would want it, right?
Well, there's a portion that also talks about the impact on academics. So it's not just a diagnosis or evaluation, it's also the impact on your academics.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments? Dr. Eng?
And Dr. Robinson, I emailed out to you today about 8:10, and my humble suggestion, and to echo what you said, is in terms of, you know, eliminating, I would put a word, and maybe, you know, you've been fine-tuning it, but eliminate inappropriate over-representation by race, ethnicity, gender, and disability in student discipline, referrals, suspensions, and absences. The point that I said was that, you know, if someone did something wrong, I want to make sure that that person has an appropriate discipline address and not be, you know, misidentified.
Right. Okay.
I do think that when we received the feedback that you were interested in either keeping or putting in a word "inappropriate" in front of "over-representation," I just told our folks that that would be a board discussion at the table to determine whether or not there is energy around making that change. It is not one that staff would suggest.
I guess I'm trying to understand the reasoning behind the inappropriate and the addition and the value-add to that given, and I know we haven't seen the student discipline report, so I think that makes that harder to see based on the data that we've seen historically, but if you want to explain yourself a little further, Dr. Eng?
Well, I think, you know, when, I don't want a, you know, if we're concerned about a over-representation of a certain population that is subjected to disciplinary referrals or actions, you know, I don't want, I don't want anything to be done that is not founded on actual facts, and that it is founded on things that can be substantiated, and so...
Such as, I guess, yeah, I'm trying to understand.
I think it's where, when you have a person who, you know, of any persuasion, but just having to, you know, if somebody were to cite that person as having done something wrong, I want to make sure that that person actually has done something wrong that is needing to have a disciplinary, you know, referral. So, and it kind of, you know, it kind of works both ways. You know, I think, you know, in terms of, you know, I don't want a person of color to have cited for disciplinary action when that person is not, you know, is not at fault, nor do I want somebody who is, you know, like Chinese, you know, that is cited for something that did something wrong and that person did not do something wrong.
Right, that's what this is saying, though.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, go ahead.
So I think I understand what you're saying, and I just, maybe I would ask staff for more clarification. You know, I think when we think about this, if you think about it just like mathematically, there was one bomb threat in a school, whoever did it, you could say, oh, if 100% of all of our punishments for bomb threat were this, it could be over-representation, right? Because the school's going to have a diverse population. But for this context, like when we work with the Office of Civil Rights, they have a specific meaning and intent when they talk about over-representation, don't they?
Yes, and I think, and that's part of the issue, is inserting another qualifier does not allow us to have the database from which we draw to actually demonstrate what the trends are, because you have to define the qualifier and then split that off into, so what does that mean? I do think that in understanding where Dr. Eng is coming from, he's talking about the code of conduct, I think. There are consequences, and there are options in the code of conduct for which we track data as well. You see that in the disciplinary report that comes out from DPI. And then there's a portion of that data that goes in to demonstrate what's happening with over or under-representation in different disciplinary areas. So there's an "and" in the middle of this that I'm getting ready to go at. We must look at areas where we have over-representation and understand why that's happening, but we want to maintain a code of conduct that ensures a positive learning environment for all students and work environment for all staff. So we're doing both, and this, but this particular aim is specifically about the data that's collected, that does, and we do have some parameters for how to collect that data. And I just, for us, the reason staff would not recommend a qualifier there is you lose the ability to collect the data based on historically what we've done, and that may be a discussion for later, that may be part of how we craft our code of conduct, which I think that's coming up in the summer perhaps. which I think that's coming up in the summer perhaps for the board to discuss. And it may be that you want to look at the code of conduct in terms of what's in there.
And that's, I think that's a fair assessment. I mean, I think, you know, teasing those two things out, I think is a, I think is a good balance, you know? If we want to look at what our actions are in terms of, you know, are we empowering our principals to be able to do what they need to do in a situation where a person did something wrong, you know, we need to have some things in place that gives them that power.
Right, and I think those are the options and the levels within the code of conduct, more so than what we're talking about here.
Okay.
For me, and I appreciate the discussion that's going forward, adding the qualifier can in some ways justify keeping things the way that they are. And so, this is a problem that is backed up by data. And so, being able to address different discipline outcomes for black and brown children is something that is important to me. And I feel like putting another word in there could be a way to justify maintaining the status quo of what is already existing. And so, for me, calling it out plainly like this addresses the issue. I don't think it prevents educators from having the ability to look at behaviors that are inappropriate and respond correctly, but it does put a lens on the outcomes that can be different for black and brown children in comparison to other groups. And so, for that reason, it wouldn't be something that I would want to see added. I'd just like to kind of keep it direct and to address ongoing disparity for outcomes.
Ms. Poppy, and then Mr. Blumberg.
So, and I understand both sides of the conversation. For me, I've noticed that a lot of children that have disabilities or 504s or IEPs, we do look at their behavior different, you know? And that's why, I mean, everything's on their race, ethnicity, gender, disability. All of those things do come into play. I think the reason that discipline becomes such a sensitive topic is because it's how. And I don't think that we really have gone into that well enough. I know that's coming up soon. But I think that's where that might cause the need, I think, for what you were asking to change the language, thinking that that would prevent the proper discipline. But that's really the answer is like, what is the proper way to handle it? Not that they do or don't have, it's like, right. So there are things that we do and don't do because of the 504 or the IEP and mostly IEP, I think, really, right? So it does create a concern because you still need to have discipline in order in the classroom, but how do we handle it, I think, is really more the topic. I don't know, for me, that's what I was kind of understanding what you were trying to say, how to address it properly. I don't know what the right word would be.
Jonathan?
I didn't...
I thought you had your hand up.
No.
No?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there appetite to change this to Dr. Eng's suggestion?
No.
Okay.
And...
You got to ask.
No, truly, I mean, I, you know, it brings up good conversations about how this actually is enacted, you know? And I think an aim is good. I think we need to make sure that our kids are treated as people and, you know, and I look forward to, you know, future discussions about the code of conduct and to sit ahead.
Any other thoughts on these changes? Back to you, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, ma'am. So next steps, our next step are to turn our plans into outcomes. And so, we want to create an accountability and cadence of reporting. And so, in order to do this, we will continue to address our most urgent things first. That includes addressing transportation challenges, supporting sufficient increases in behavioral and mental health concerns, prioritizing recruitment and retention of high-quality staff in instructional and non-instructional positions. It includes building on collective ownership around equity in all aspects of our work, from the district to the classroom level. We will begin operationalizing our work through refreshing individual departmental management plans. We talked about that at length in discussion. This will include defining core functions and considering key components of effectiveness. We will also engage with schools in their school improvement planning to align with the new aspects of the plan, especially equity, behavioral health, and operational effectiveness. And finally, we will continue expanding how we listen and learn with regards to families in our community. We will partner with families and community as we pursue this change together by continually gathering feedback from our families and communities of all demographics, by strengthening partnerships, and by supporting our new superintendent to use the strategic plan to achieve our goals for equity and excellence. So at this time, I thank you for your time and consideration and your listening. Are there any additional questions, comments, concerns, or any feedback that you would like to provide to our team as we prepare to seek board approval in this evening's meeting?
As Dr. Robinson said, this is our agenda for tonight. Anything else? Ms. Poppy?
I appreciate on page 12, the community listening session groups. I think that's a very good addition. I like that.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate the long list of thank yous that Dr. Robinson said at the beginning.
Just one thing, this is fantastic. I wish every time it said the four Cs we would spell aloud in the document, just to reinforce it every single time.
Do you know it, it shall be done.
I mean, I'm just...
Do you know it, we will make sure that it is done.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
It's another link up. We just have the four Cs, but then stop using words. It's a good point.
I actually had that in my notes right now.
Thank you.
I think that is a technical correction we can make.
Yes.
All right, thank you all very much. Thank you both for helping to steer this work and thank you.
Thank you.
We are moving on to meal prices for the 2023-2024 school year. It has, this is also on our agenda for this evening. It has been requested that we pull it to action, which will be done, but I may need a reminder because we're unable to make that change in assembly. So if I get the closed session and I haven't gotten there, please speak up and help me out.
Got it.
With us are Ms. Paula DeLuca, our Senior Director of Child Nutrition Services, and Mark Strickland, our Chief Facilities and Operations. And we'll wait for their presentation to get looked at. And I'm just going to say, this is always tough, and I really wish that somebody would step in and make all the meals free like we had during the pandemic because that was great.
Yeah. I agree.
Reading is...
It's going to be confusing because there's two different kinds of passes depending on what graduation you're going to.
Okay, thank you. Ms. DeLuca, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, Chairman, Happy Members of the Board, and Superintendent Moore. I do appreciate your time here today to talk about the recommended meal price increase for the lunch for the coming school year. Before transitioning to the contributing factors that help us determine whether or not we need to have a meal price increase, I would first like to review some of the important pieces around the meals that we serve so that everyone understands some of the components and factors that we face. The meals that we serve are federally regulated in that we are required to provide minimum portion sizes for fluid milk, proteins such as meats or meat alternates like peanut butter or other replacements of protein, fruits and vegetables, as well as whole grains. In addition to the basic meal components, which varies based on grades, we are also responsible for meeting certain nutritional requirements. Those requirements include limitations on sodium, limitations on SAT fat. All of our meals have to be inclusive of items that are zero grams of trans fat. And then, we also need to meet very, very specific caloric ranges for different grade groups that effectively have a 100-point allowance for us in terms of the calorie contributions. With those requirements met, we are then able to receive federal funding. So we are not able to claim meals for any federal funding unless those conditions are met. In addition to those items, we also have a responsibility for meeting what are called vegetable subgroups. What that means is for the vegetables that we are required to serve on an average throughout the week, we have to serve a certain amount of dark green vegetables, red-orange vegetables, starches, and then there is another category as well, in addition to beans and peas. So our methodology for menu planning does not come with a lot of flexibility, and our planning of menus and our pricing component for menus does not give us any allowances to not comply because in so doing, we could not claim our meals for reimbursement. So with that said, I would like to move on to our next slide, oh, this slide, here we go, where I can address some of the features with regard to our meal prices. The most prominent and recurring earned revenue sources that we rely on are federal reimbursements, which are based on a tiered structure, depending on whether we are serving meals to students that are qualified for free, reduced-price benefits, or whether they are paying students. We get a much higher reimbursement for those students that are eligible for free because the government intends for us to use that to offset the costs, to the extent that that reimbursement will do that. And then, of course, the tier remaining for the reduced price and the paid eligible students. Back one slide, please. Also, we do not receive what's called cost reimbursement funding. It's important for you to understand the distinction between a meal reimbursement and a cost reimbursement as a function of operating. Cost reimbursement would mean that we can submit our costs to the federal government and get paid for the cost that, you know, we incurred to operate our program. Conversely, a per-meal reimbursement is only intended to give us an allowance that we then have to plan our program around. The second primary source of earned revenue is cash. Cash is really what we get from our paying students, those eligible for paid meals, and then any à la carte items that we sell, such as beverages and snack items, and then finally, any catering service revenues that we produce. When we talk about à la carte, it's important for you to understand the function of that. We would not be able to do as well as we do financially if we did not sell beverages and snacks. We are reliant on those sales to help shore up the federal reimbursements that do not cover the cost of producing the meals that we provide. So it's a combination of all of these sources that allows us to try to reach what we call a break even at the end of the year, which is effectively our expenditures match our revenues. So as for our primary expenditures, we have two cost categories. The primary cost category that we try to work through very diligently with is our salaries and our benefits. We do not control the cost of our benefits. We provide them, just as the school system does, to all other employees based on, you know, the position that they fill. The salaries that we pay for our staff are paid for out of our own revenues. We do not receive any other revenue source to offset our costs for salaries. Salaries currently, to date, are running us about 57%. The objective, the best practice objective, is 40 to 45%. The reason why we run high is because our staff is making significantly more than they had about two years ago. Food and supplies is the second high-cost category for us, but ironically, we're running really, really well year-to-date at about 36%. Normally, we try to reach between 38 to 40%, but the prime objective for a program of ours would be 40 to 45%. So we work really hard trying to manage all of the foods and the government entitlements that come to us, to leverage those the best we can to provide the services to our students that they prefer, but keeping within the cost structure that we're kind of having to deal with. Since CNS operates as an enterprise, though, we are expected to rely solely on our own income sources to manage our cost structure. As for our key impacts in terms of the coming year with regard to budget, on this next slide, you will see that salaries and benefits is a major component. Again, our staff is so very grateful for the salary increases that they received last year. When we built our budget for this current year, we did not effectively build in the extra dollar per hour that came when they moved from the $15 to the $16 mark. So as we consider increases for next year, we have no salary increase built into our budget. So our current circumstances not account yet for any additional costs that could come as a result of a salary increase. And with every salary increase comes an added cost of benefits. So there is a correlating factor there that we have to consider as well. In addition to that, we have elevated food, packaging, and service costs that we're continuing to contend with. Pre-pandemic, we did, we were operating really super well with regard to, I think, managing that piece of our operation. We are a participant in the North Carolina Purchasing Alliance, which is one of the largest in this country, and we are participating in that alliance procurement because we can leverage our statewide volume with over 100 school systems as voluntary members to get our costs down to a very minimal level to the greatest extent that we can. Our food and packaging and service costs increased as a result of the pandemic. Many of the companies that had been relying on their own structures for pricing things for their customers became disrupted by the pandemic. Many lost staff, many had problems with transportation, and as a result, they needed to find a way to overcome supply chain challenges, which was getting product from their facilities to ours. As a result of that, they did what they needed to for their own organization's sustainability, and unfortunately, the pass-through effect was the cost to its customers. So we continue to work through that. We've had cost increases anywhere from 25 to 300%, depending on the item that we are purchasing. We do not see any of those costs going away in terms of, you know, the recent effective increase. So we're anticipating having to manage that prospectively with possibly some added incremental costs. And then, finally, we were so fortunate last year when the United States Department of Agriculture opted to give us what was called supply chain assistance funding. They started with a $3 million allotment for Wake County schools, but as we transitioned into this year, they added another 3.1 million. So this year, we use or expect to use about 3 million of that and intend to carry 3.1 million over to next year to act as a buffer for us. That will cease at the end of this year, however. That was a one-time allowance. Also this year, again, very grateful to the USDA for stepping up and recognizing the challenges that many of us operators throughout this country were going to experience, they increased for one-year allotment and added 40 cents per lunch reimbursement and an extra 15 cents per breakfast. For Wake County schools, that contributes about an extra $3.8 million that we will not see next year, unless someone at the 11th hour steps up and helps us out. not see next year unless someone at the 11th hour steps up and helps us out again. But we can't build a budget with that hope. We have to build our budget right now with the reality that we've gotten no indication whatsoever that that will be extended. So looking at next year on this next slide, we began our budget process recognizing a $6 million revenue shortfall. We carried over the $3.1 million from the supply chain assistance funding to try to contest that buffer. We reduced some of our school-based positions by about 700 MOEs, which converts to, you could say approximately 70 positions, depending on if it's a year-round position or traditional school position. We knew that we would have to bring forward last year's plan, which was a multi-year strategy on price adjustments, and we tried to do what we could to be as conservative as possible by recommending a 25 cent increase on lunch while maintaining the prices of our breakfast next year. But in so doing, that does not yet sufficiently cover our projected costs. And so what we have opted to do is to dip into a net cash resource that we have without knowing for certain how much of that we would actually need, but that we would be doing anyway if we can't break even as the year progresses, if our costs exceed our revenues. Every day we come into our work, we have no guarantees of income. We hope that students participate in our program, but it is truly the result of student participation that determines whether or not we'll have revenues coming in that will cover not only variable costs, but certainly fixed costs that we have, and that are necessary to operate a program that is highly regulated and highly scrutinized. With that said, I presented to you what our price increase is, which is 25 cents only for lunch, with consideration for any questions that you may have, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you, Ms. DeLuca.
May I ask? I forgot my hearing aids. If you could speak up, I would be most appreciative of that.
Thank you, Ms. DeLuca. Are there any questions at this time? Mr. Hershey?
How do you determine how many meals are made every day?
How many meals are made every day? They're made. Good question. Thank you for that. We use a, what's called an enterprise technology system that we record all of our items that we serve, all of our recipes are in it, all of the meals that are served to specific students are tracked, and we record all of our production information. So our managers look at that as their effective foundation for what they may consider meal service, you know, to consist of or require. They can never pinpoint it entirely. So in our schools, they batch cook, which means they're trying to cook in small batches to try to meet the need without overcooking. And the reason why that's so critical is anything that we prepare that we cannot claim for reimbursement is a direct loss to our program and contributes to our food and supplies costs, which is effectively waste, which we try to keep to an absolute minimum.
Thank you. I think it's really important for people to hear that the school system is doing that, to try to be as efficient as possible. I appreciate that.
Mr. Haggerty and then Ms. Caulfield?
Thank you, Ms. DeLuca. One of the issues that we've talked about around the table when we talk about student meals has been student meal debt, and where students maybe can't qualify for aid, but they also can't pay for their meal. How does, how would programs for helping address student meal debt be handled under the enterprise fund rules? Could we pay for student meal debt programs or student meal debt relief outside of enterprise funds, or do those have to be enterprise funds too?
So there are very strict regulations regarding student meal debt. The debt actually has to transfer to the school system at the end of every school year, and I will say, we are really fortunate in Wake County that our parents have been exceptionally responsible with this being our first year of allowing meal charges. And for those who aren't aware, the value of the charge that we do allow is three days' lunch and breakfast as a total value based on a student's eligibility.
So if I can follow up, would we be able to address student meal debt from other revenues, or is there a way? You just, I guess my concern is anytime you raise the price, you're worried about additional students being unable to pay, and just curious about is there a way to address that outside of the enterprise fund?
I'm going to restate. I think Mr. Haggerty is asking if there are options or what the options are for outside of your revenue requirements for community partners or others to help resolve student meal debt.
Oh, thank you for that clarifying point, because we do have community members and organizations actually that contact child nutrition and ask to make a donation, and we apply that donation based on their expectation. So we'll communicate with them about the options, and then they make a decision, and we apply the debt, or apply the donation to student accounts to bring down that debt.
Thank you.
Ms. Caulfield and then Ms. Waters?
I had volunteered for an every tray counts program they had at one of the schools. I don't know if they're still doing that or anything, but one of the things that I noticed was they were required to put, like, say, milk on the child's when they came up to buy their lunch, and I could not believe how many went unopened into the garbage can at the end of the day. Do they still require that they put certain things on, or do the children now pick from what they will actually consume?
Thank you for asking that question. We are required by law to provide the meal as I described earlier. However, there is what's called an offer versus serve provision that we exercise in all of our schools here in Wake County, and that means that students may choose three of the five, I'll call them, food groups, since that's what people tend to relate to. But there is one federal requirement, and that is that they have to take a half of a cup of fruit or vegetable. So if there was a forced placement of milk on a student's tray, that would not have been appropriate from my view unless, of course, the student was choosing the milk instead of something else to ensure that they had three components. Without those component requirements met, we could not get meals, we could not get the meal reimbursement, and as a result of that, we would have to charge an à la carte price for each of those items to the student. It's much more cost-effective usually to receive the meal as opposed to purchase a lot of independent items.
Ms. Waters?
I have a couple of questions that are kind of very different. The first one is for my understanding and still grasping what the enterprise model looks like. Is this a model that is used throughout the state, throughout the nation, that school systems operate in this manner, and if not, can you give a little bit of information as to why this model is in place in this district and if other models have been considered that would provide more maybe flexibility around the ability to, need to increase costs from this? That's a loaded question. Lots of questions in one.
So first of all, the enterprise model, enterprise is really a term to, I think, convey that we are a federal grant program, and as a result, all of our financials must be kept separate. As far as contributing revenues, there's a lot of variety in that, but primarily it's federal reimbursements, cash payments from students, à la carte sales, and any catering revenue.
I think if you're asking, could the district allocate a set amount of local funds to CNS to offset the enterprise-type requirements, needs, is that possible?
Any organization with the LEA included can make a contribution to CNS to help CNS balance its revenue and expenditure.
Thank you for helping me ask my question. And so has that historically ever been done, or has there's no precedent?
Yeah. So I think we have used local dollars to cover shortfalls because we want to maximize the enterprise nature of the CNS program, and when, if there are shortfalls, then we do cover those, and I think that generally would have to be local dollars, David?
That is correct, and one example would be during the pandemic when basically everyone was virtual and the only food production that was being conducted was for community food distribution, and we had a strong desire to keep the staff unpaid as opposed to the furlough or ref, which was local funds.
So it is possible that the board could ask staff to bring a budget case forward that included an amount that would be dedicated local funds to support CNS operations. And the only thing I would say is that kind of goes on the table with all the other needs that the district has, which is why we tend to have operated under, see what's raised, what is covered, and if there is a need, then cover it, as opposed to dedicating local funding.
We did check with some neighboring districts to see if they're using local funds to cover the operation, and we did not identify any, with one exception being there are a couple areas, and we spoke about this, and you're meeting today, where we're required to use local funds. We do not use enterprise funds, and those include payment for any unpaid meals. Those are paid with local funds. They're required to be paid with local funds. Those are one of the categories.
And then my other question, just thinking about a lot of the families that are in District 4 and throughout Wake County. Part of the work that we have been doing is to infuse policy 1150 into the work and applying an equity lens, and the first equity lens question is how this decision impacts students or families desperately. So how have you thought about different families and where they sit as you look at this price increase, and understanding that families do have the opportunity to apply for free or reduced lunch, but also knowing that everybody who has a need doesn't always qualify on paper? So just can you speak to kind of the process that you think about when you consider how this really impacts kids because a hungry child is not able to focus and learn in the same way?
And I totally appreciate where you're coming from because I do know from firsthand experience, having to process an application for a family that makes $1 more than the federal allowance, and they don't qualify for a free or reduced meal, and as a result, they actually, the net effect on them is they're in a worse situation ultimately than those who do qualify. It's really unfortunate, but this is the structure of the federal government, and as an operator, we are so sensitive to that, but we are also, we're not allowed to make any provisional allowances. We are required to hold strictly to the rules on how we determine eligibility, and we're not allowed to provide, or I should say, use our funding to help certain groups of students that might have, you know, other needs. We're, it's against the federal rule to do that.
I'll just add one postscript. The change in policy to allow three breakfasts, three lunches to sort of carry is a recent change.
Yes.
So we did that with specifically your question in mind, because prior to that change, they could not carry a balance like that. And so that change was made at that time for that reason, and that is another place where if you wanted to extend that beyond three breakfasts and three lunch, that could be part of a policy discussion.
That's 6220 policy. Follow-up to her question?
Um.
I can wait.
Yeah, let me.
Sure.
Dr. Ainge?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Two different questions. First, regards to the enterprise method, and you said that it pays for the benefits as well. Is that correct? So the cost of the benefits for the employees, is that standard throughout the entire school district? Are you not negotiating separately from?
No.
Okay.
Our employees, our employees of the Wake County Public School System, and they're not treated any differently from a benefit standpoint.
It's just where the whole money comes from?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Everybody is in negotiation for, like, you know, visibility?
The health benefits are the same, the opt-in for vision or dental are the same, the retirement benefit is the same because they're considered WCPSS employees. It's whether source of the funds that pays the benefit is different.
And then the second question is, in terms of, you know, at the school level, what kind of payment do the cafeteria accept for, you know, if the students want to buy food, do they take, like, how do they pay for the food? Do they take a card, do they take Venmo?
Oh, how our students pay? Our students have a few different options. They're able to pay with cash online if they would like, and then we also provide a service through what's called My School Bucks, where a family can go online, either on a computer or on a tablet or their phone, and they can for free set up an account for their student to make a single deposit or a recurring deposit, so that when these funds are deposited, they appear on that enterprise software system that we have as they go through the service line, and when they make their purchase, it just takes enough of the appropriate amount from their balance. And so, you know, families can make those deposits, and within, I think, 15 minutes, they're recognized within our system.
So they don't have to carry the cash?
It's, again, up to the family. Some families send us a check, you know, some send cash with their students.
It's amazing how fast a kindergartner can remember their student number.
Oh, yes. I think Wake County must have a song for it.
Yes. Mr. Hershey, you had a follow-up? Good question, Ms. Waters?
Yes, so I think you said we can't do this, but I just want to be certain. For those that don't qualify, we cannot institute our own limit for people to apply to keep a very, so, I don't know how to phrase this. Those that don't qualify, let's say, if we said, well, we want to cover the cost for those that are 20% over that, whatever the federal line is, so they don't have an increase. But everybody above that that can afford to do it, that's fine, they can, and that would bring down our number. Is that permissible?
So I can, I've been doing this for 40 years, and I've never seen a school system do that yet, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's not permissible. I would think that in order to implement something like that, certainly, I believe we'd probably have to have a board policy. It would have to be applied consistently and without any objective review or a subjective review, where you've got people making decisions based on factors that are not related to their household size and income. I would be happy to look into that if you would like.
Effectively, it's effectively creating like a third category.
Correct.
Free-reduced and locally reduced, if it was.
Right, so we are not hurting families that... So we are not hurting families that are $1 over.
I think Mr. Neder has a follow-up to that.
Yeah, well, just in addition to enterprise, and again, in a similar like that, Mr. Hershey, child nutrition revenues could not be used to support that. They would have to be local.
Correct.
And a point that, I mean, I think that's a really interesting idea to look at and see, but you will still have families that are $1 over of the next tier.
True.
But I feel better if they're $1.
I understand, I understand.
Ms. Johnson-Hussler.
No surprise to Mr. Luca. She knows this pains me. And I have to publicly thank you for the work that you do on our security task force as we, every year, talk about how the impact of not being able to feed our students without cost. So with that said, there's going to be no surprise to those of you who've been around. This is going to always be hard for me. It's going to always be a recommendation that you make that I don't support for all the reasons I've told you for the last 10 years I've been on the board. I just can't ever sit in this space and know, one, it was me in this place. Two, you all have heard from me, I mean, yes, we have the online portal, but even a family who can use it, today is different. There's fees attached to that. So every time I upload money, no longer because she's in drive, but upload money to her account, there's a fee like any other app that you use. And so that's not money that people who have it freely consider, but those who consider every dollar they're using knows the impact of those fees every time you use an online application. So with that said, I do have a question. I mean, we've, you've done significant amount of work to make changes and certainly I love that you built in my complaint that we gave kids food that they, that was embarrassing to them when they were behind in their lunch payments. So thank you for the changes that you've certainly made in my tenure on what we provide kids to eat when they don't have money on their accounts. So I want to thank you for the work that we have made. I am curious, we haven't talked about this, and maybe it'll come to facilities, and that's the CEP plan, and is there any way? And the superintendent shakes her head because it is a thorn to my side. I think myself and the commissioner who worked on this have talked about this for decades. So I'm not sure if we made any headway.
Raise, raise your hand in the peanut gallery if I've talked to you about CEP.
So hopefully she said, okay, it is accurate.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yes.
Mark has also heard from me since he's been in this hall.
And can we clarify for our new board members?
Well, it's not even just the, because I can give you what it means. It's actually what the community eligibility program means. So that's really the thing you want to know.
We are working with staff now to identify a number of schools that we hope to add. So just know we are, we are working on that process and superintendent has, we were already working on it, but she's pressed us on it as well. So we will be bringing something to chief soon and then to another meeting.
Can you just explain very quickly what community eligibility provision means?
I'd love to. The community eligibility provision, CEP for sure, is something that was enacted at the federal level back in 2011, 2012. CEP allows school systems to identify schools that can get, provide meals at no cost to all their students based on a very prescriptive formula. In effect, the formula is taking the number of students enrolled in a school that have been directly certified for food stamps, TANF, or that are categorically eligible based on a homeless status, whether they're foster, runaway, or migrant. If the percentage of students fall into one of those class, classifications, then that percentage of students, if it reaches a certain percent for the school, which is the magic number, 62.5%, then we could receive the free federal-level funding for breakfast and lunch to provide the meal to the students in that school at no cost. The key is to reach the 62.5% qualifier as a school. You can also take schools that exceed that and blend the schools by grouping them to the point where you've built in some that do not reach that level to meet the level so that you can effectively leverage your strength on that to bring more schools into the fold of CEP. At the point in which you want to implement CEP in a school or a group of schools that fall short of that percentage, the cost to do that, which is the amount not covered by reimbursement, a portion of it will be, a good portion, but the amount that is not must be taken on by the LEA.
So it is a pain in my side because USDA, as you've all asked questions, is another federal piece of legislation that did not take into consideration the impact to real community. It hasn't changed in decades, and this is one of the provisions that we dug our heels in on to see were there ways to make true impact. And there are districts who've figured this out, much smaller districts, which make a lot of sense. I mean, districts who have no money have taken this one because you can root the schools. It is not easy, and I know, that's why I said it's a pain in the side, to get the district to think fully about how we could take more advantage because we do it, but for those who meet the threshold. But it will, that is my last two cents. It'll continue to be my push on pushing the district to really figure out how we utilize it better.
And I do think this is coming, there is a CEP presentation.
I figure eventually.
Soon. So before I get out of here, you'll have a CEP presentation.
Thank you.
With the school, I agree with you. Fees always come up and get you at the end, you know, regardless of what you do, everything gets switched, pushed into electronic and digital, and then you have to pay the fees. Is that per family or per individual?
Per transaction.
Per transaction. Every time I uploaded money, there's a fee.
So when you put the money on, they charge you a fee? Can you split that up between your several children? Say you have four children. Is it a fee for each child?
I think it's based on the total transaction. The total of the transaction.
Right, so what I'm asking is, is it a transaction to put it on as a family account, or is it each student has a particular account?
Can one transaction include four children?
I know, she's like me.
It can, but I believe the fee is a percent, so it won't matter whether it's for one student or it's, it's like a credit card fee.
And who gives that fee?
And all four students will be on the account, but each of the students has a subaccount. And so mom can put 50, 50, 50, 50. There's one $200 transaction, and the percent fee is against the total transaction.
So as you have multiple children who eat multiple different priced meals throughout the year, and you're on recurring, one will hit recurring and go back to the set limit before the other one who will bring their lunch one day and hit it before another one. So you can have, you know, you can hit that percentage fee multiple times in a month depending on what level you send it at because your different kids are hitting different recurring pieces, or they're zeroing out and then you're having to add to it so that you're not indebted if you chose to do the singular model.
Or you're a family who can only put what you can, and you can't click reoccurring. So every week I might be incurring, well, not might, are incurring a fee because I get paid weekly, so I can only pay you when Chick-fil-A pays me. And therefore, you're accruing a fee every single week to be your job.
And who gets these things?
The company that sponsors the app, yes.
There's no way that we can do it within the school like that they can come to the school?
We do.
That's just in their contract. That's the charge for the service.
We do that within the school, but we do it not in a credit card transaction mode. We do it by taking a check or by having the family members send cash.
So they can get a credit at the school rather than using this credit card?
Oh, absolutely, yes. We've maintained the traditional methods of payment. My School Bucks is effectively, if you want to use your credit card, that's where the service fee comes in. But you can use My School Bucks as a free service to monitor your student's account, to see what your student is eating. There's no fee associated with those things. It's just when you process a payment to the account.
All right. Are there any further questions on the increase? Mr. Strickland?
I would note, I sent you an email on Friday afternoon. We do have this on the agenda for today, but we also have it on the consent agenda for tonight. I can have Mr. Luca stick around for that if there would be any changes or?
Yeah, there has been a request, and I said this as people were shuffling around, there's been a request to move it to action. We won't see that change on assembly because Ms. Allen is not, she is taking a well-earned vacation. So it will be on action tonight. And I'm just asking for a general reminder from my board members, if I start asking for a motion to go into closed session, I've forgotten this, please remind me. So we will still see it in assembly on consent, but we'll have pulled it to action.
Ideally, when it comes to approving the agenda, whenever you'll say, we're pulling that so that you, you're not voting for it on the consent.
Or I'm voting against the whole consent.
Exactly.
Because I'm voting against. So that was the other question I had is, I would be voting against the entire, every consent item.
The idea is that it's not on consent. It's pulled from consent, so we'll all try to remember when it comes to the agenda at times that to move it to action.
Thank you. So we will have done that, even though assembly will not have reflected that. So thank you, Ms. Luca. Thank you, Mr. Strickland.
Thank you for all you want.
Later this evening. And we're going to turn it over to Ms. Joanne Honeycutt and Mr. Drew Cook and move on to the application for career and technical education, state and federal funding for the next fiscal year.
Good afternoon. Board members, Secretary Lieutenant Moore, thank you for the opportunity to spend a few minutes with you this afternoon reviewing our career and technical education local plan for 23, 24. The purpose of our time together is to share with you some key indicators of our CTE performance and how they, and share with you the impact of CTE on students beyond high school graduation. And in addition, we want to highlight some of the overarching big rock strategies for our continuous improvement. As a reminder, we are required by the federal Perkins legislation to bring our local plan to you each year for your review and approval. Last year, we completed a comprehensive local needs assessment as directed by the federal legislation that directed the strategies that were included in last year's plan and also in this year's plan. So our plan for 23, 24 is very much a continuation of the work and a reflection of the local needs assessment that we conducted last year. I want to begin with a review of our performance, which is highlighted in this infographic. We'll start in the upper left corner and we'll work clockwise around this. I realize it is very busy. It's a lot of information on here. But we're starting in the upper left, and you will notice that the graduation rate for CTE concentrators is 99% for our school system. As a reminder, a CTE concentrator is a student who has completed a pathway in career and technical education. Generally speaking, that's two or three high school credits, two or three high school courses. We've maintained this very high graduate, graduation rate for a number of years. You notice in the graphic that we are well above the overall state graduation rate of 86%, but we're also above the Wake County Public School graduation rate of 89%. As we move clockwise, the next image, we've highlighted the number of participants and concentrator graduates in CTE programs. We had over 60,000 students participate in CTE in school year 21, 22, and that represented over 126,000 course enrollments, letting you know that many students take more than one class with us. Those students are about 53% male, 47% female. Our race and ethnicity of students that we serve are within 1 percentage point of the overall district population. About 1 in 4 students served or identified as economically disadvantaged. 8% are served under IDEA. 6% are English language learners. Nearly 6,000 students completed a CTE concentration in school year 21, 22, and 43% of graduates in June of '22 had earned a CTE concentration. We're really proud of that 43% because that shows growth from 27% of graduate superconcentrators when I started here in 2017. We're excited also to report the 16,489 credentials that were earned by students in school year 21, 22. This is the highest number of CTE, of credentials earned by CTE students since we started keeping track of that. We lead the state in absolute number of credentials earned. We're proud of that also, but we do have room for improvement. You will see the 26% at the bottom of that indicates the number of concentrator graduates who exited with a credential. I will share with you, I'm stealing my own thunder here, we've looked at data for students who will graduate '22, '23, and seniors, not, and not all seniors will be concentrators, understand, but it looks like about 70% of seniors will exit high school with a credential this school year. So we're making great progress there.
Because I tell everybody that they got, we have a 99% graduation rate. That's why I made my own case. It's true.
The next data points you will see there are around academic proficiency, and this measures the academic proficiency of students who are concentrators, and it indicates the percentage of concentrators who earn a Level 4 or 5 on the related end-of-course exam. So for English, it's English 2. For science, it's biology. For math, it would be English, I mean, Math 1 or Math 3. Our district outperforms our region, our State Board of Education region, and also outperforms the state on all of these measures. We're also very excited that our CTE concentrators perform as well or better, very similarly to all Wake County public school students. We conclude our etat glance with, by looking at the placement of students who earn a CTE concentration. That's the post-secondary placement rate is 99%. So if you look across those circles, you'll see 52% of students reported employment, 89% post-secondary education, and then smaller numbers for military and OJT. It is possible for students to report more than one positive placement, which is why if you do the math, it adds up to over 100%. So in addition to the benefit of higher graduation rate of being a concentrator, we have access to data this year that we've not had in the past, and it tracks, this is from NC Tower, it tracks concentrator graduates over time. So the first cohort of students are 2018 graduates. In this graph, I apologize for it being hard to read, the blue line shows students who graduated in 2018 with a concentration in CTE. The black line shows students who graduated in 2018 without a CTE concentration. So this shows you that over time, students have higher employment rates and they have higher wages. So being placed initially is important, but also the long-term benefits of being a concentrator we're now able to show. So next, we'll transition to looking at the strategies that are in our plan, and I've organized these into three buckets for our work today, looking at high-quality classroom instruction, student organizations, and career developments. These are the components that we consider a high-quality CTE program. Beginning with classroom instruction, in order to remain aligned with industry standards and to ensure that students are prepared for careers, we purchase equipment and tools that are indicative of what students would experience in the workplace. We maintain an aggressive computer replacement system. We utilize our career advisory teams to give advice on emerging technologies. In this plan, we have dedicated budget to also expand middle grades offerings, trying to push middle grade students to have greater explor- middle grade students to have greater exploratory opportunities. So we are advancing agriculture education programs and exploring trades programs. CTE also procures software, tools, and resources for CTE teachers across the district. With over 150 CTE courses and more than 50 pathways offered, the tools and needs are quite diverse. Much effort has been dedicated to supporting students in earning industry-recognized credentials. You may recall from the previous graphic, 26% of concentrators graduating with a credential. We identified credential attainment as an area of growth a couple of years ago, and we've utilized additional state funds to really push that agenda forward, believing in the benefit of students exiting high school with a diploma plus a credential, making them much more attractive in the employment marketplace. Our efforts in this area include training for teachers to support their attainment and learning of the skills that are assessed on the credential assessments. We purchase course materials to enhance student learning, and we have teachers who are training other teachers as well. Professional learning is an ongoing process in CTE. We support teachers in not only technical, learning technical aspects of their programs, but also in learning the pedagogy that helps them be highly effective in the classroom. We collaborate with human resources for onboarding alternative entry staff teachers who are coming to us from places other than traditional educator prep programs, and we also support teachers to attend the DPI Summer Conference. That's one of our primary learning opportunities for teachers. In addition, we offer professional learning communities as a district to support teachers who may be the only one teaching that course or subject in their building. Another aspect of this work is to provide support for our special population students. And special populations in career and technical education would be students who are non-traditional gender, who are identified exceptional children, five or four, homeless, foster children, single parents, probably left some out. But we do this by removing barriers to support their learning, whatever that might mean. Sometimes it means that we buy their economically disadvantaged, we buy their tests, or do background screening for them to have clinical placements. Sometimes it's bringing in assistive technology. So it's a, it's a wide range. And then lastly, our expansion of career academies is also a strategy to achieve high-quality instruction. We currently have 23 career academies. Our career academies are just smaller learning communities that are focused around a career theme. Our newest ones for '22, '23 are at Leesville Road High School in the area of game art and design, and Wakefield High School in the area of small business development. Because the academies are smaller and we can cohort the learning, students are able to integrate academic and technical standards together, and that enhances their core curriculum. They also have a tremendous sense of belonging and identification with other members of that academy who have similar career goals. We also require our academy students to complete a 120-hour internship before they graduate from high school, placing them in a workplace, learning those skills in real time. In the past five years, we've grown career academies with particular focus on schools in the eastern part of the district. We'll continue to expand our presence by adding programs at more schools and CTE areas that are innovative and that support local economic needs. Student organizations are the next large umbrella that we will look at. They are an integral part of CTE programs. They're co-curricular and provide an extension to classroom experiences. In addition, these organizations provide students with opportunities to network with professionals and develop leadership skills that serve them long past high school. Our plan includes our commitment to continue paying affiliate membership dues where allowed, not all of them allow it, but where allowed, we pay that. That enables all students in programs to receive the benefits of membership without families having to pay individual dues. For '22, '23, we have nearly 11,000 CTE students who are members of student organizations. We also commit to purchase materials that support skill development and success in the organization's competitive events. We have numerous state winners every year. Three years ago, and you'll hear more about this later today, but three years ago, DPI first allowed us to pay stipends to the advisors, to the CTE staff that serve to lead, co-lead these organizations with students. So we've been paying that stipend since we were first allowed, and we're, we'll actually be asking later today for an increase in that stipend. The hours that these teachers spend with students, helping them be successful and doing this work, far outweighs what we are able to pay them as a stipend, but we're excited to be able to do that. And lastly, our plan contains our continued commitment to help students participate by offsetting transportation costs and support for advisors and student registration fees. So the last bucket is that of under-career development, and I put this slide in, in two columns, one being career, career exploration, and the other with a focus on work-based learning. We, we think about CTE as being a place for students beginning in middle school to have exposure to careers so that they can begin to identify what it is they might want to do or be as, when they exit high school. For school year '21, '22, we've had 144,000 career development encounters for students, utilizing nearly 7,000 community volunteers. So you can see from the list the types of those career exploration activities there. Some are district-led and some are school-based activities, and we support all of them. On the other side of the slide, you see the work-based learning, which is a more directed or focused participation for career development, and it includes internships, it includes particular course clinical explorations in nursing fundamentals and veterinary technician. In '21, '22, we had just shy of 900 experiences in that category, and year-to-date, we have 759 for this year, but expecting more of them to come in as we begin to conclude. So those are the three large buckets that our strategies fall under, and I'm happy to answer any questions and any comments and feedback that you may have for me.
I will say, in addition to this, Ms. Honeycutt has an excellent presentation that she can bring to your board advisory council, and even our elementary principals were like, very excited to hear about the CTE offerings in middle school and high school. So that's my personal plug, not that I want you to take a trip around all nine districts, but just as folks are planning for next year. Ms. Edmonds?
Just, um, thank you so much. I, I, everywhere I go, I find that the public does not have a good understanding of how robust our CTE programs are in Wake County. And what you have provided us today helps us communicate that to our community, and I've, I've shared this with you before. I'm so proud of what we do in Wake County with CTE. And I especially, like, I know about our high schools, but I don't recall seeing this. Which slide is it? Slide nine, the map of the career academies. I knew we had career academies, but I don't recall seeing them presented in this way, in this visual, and it's just so helpful. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Dr. Eng?
Yes, I concur. I was very impressed in my last tour of Wakefield High School, the amount, the breadth of the offerings over there that cover so many different interests. And then I went to the Virtual Enterprise, the classroom that they were doing that, and it was phenomenal, that confidence of the students there in just trying to pitch me the, their sales pitch, you know. I mean, it was, it was fun to be in that classroom, and everybody had, had their, you know, project, their, their, um, part of the project, and so it was really wonderful to see.
Thank you. Mr. Hershey?
Um, two things. One, serious and one not. First, I have to compliment you on your jacket color coordination.
I wish I could tell you I was together enough that it was.
So good. So as we...
That was the serious question.
Yes. As we looked at the strategic plan earlier, and we see 99% here, have we examined what it is that keeps that number at 99% versus not?
So I think there are lots of factors that contribute to students who are concentrators matriculating through the system with their cohort. One of them is that they are in, in courses that they have an interest and a passion about, and many of them that can be successful there. So they may not be successful in math, forgive me math colleagues, but, but they may be very successful in culinary class, or apparel, or whatever.
She uses a lot of math.
They do use a lot of math there.
Teachers would not agree. That's not application.
It's in context, right? It's an application of those skills. So part of it is the passion and the interest they have. Another key to that is that it's a sense of belonging. So in many schools, there, there's one or two teachers in a particular pathway. If we go back to apparel, there might be one teacher in apparel, and that teacher and that student make a connection, and that student will take every apparel course that teacher offers until the end of time.
Yes.
Because they have that sense of belonging and that adult that cares for them. And that happens over a number of years. They may not have that, that other places. The student organization is part of that as well. Students will move mountains to be able to travel and go and compete with their peers. And then I think...
We're bored. We've said that before.
And, and I think the final part is, you know, I think students are more and more seeing the value of the credentials that they can earn. So we talked about the 16,489, and those are industry-recognized credentials. So it could be an Adobe certification, or it could be Microsoft, or it could be NCCER for someone working in the trades. And that serves as a motivator for students to continue as well.
So one last, so do we have as part of the strategic plan, a goal, you said the new number could be 70%? Do we put a goal on that, or is that kind of leave it as it is because we have 99% graduation as far as having that professional certification?
So one of the metrics that if you look under Priority 1, that we got listed as kind of a progress monitoring data point, is the percentage of CTE completers, right? So I think that's a bar that we want to kind of track and establish, because I think to the point of your question, if the graduation rate of that group is 99%, then it should be by nature our goal to get the N higher.
Literally.
And raise the number of kids that are in that pipeline.
Yes.
Which then has an obvious...
And having that certification.
Correct.
Yeah, all right. So impressive. Well done.
Thank you.
Lynn? Yes? Can you see me? Sorry. I can't. The thing that I will add, and you alluded to, but I think is necessary, is the number of people from the business community that are committed to this project. Like, every one of these programs have business alliances, like the relationship, again, this is from a parent, but also from a board member watching from both angles, that's also an additional relationship that those students are developing that they wouldn't otherwise have, which for so many kids, they can foresee themselves in their future because they're connected to a business, they've done an internship. And even though my own kid didn't go through an academy, the relationship with the business that she worked with for her FCC LA, her presentation, right, it was a relationship that'll be lifelong. And so I, I also would attach the relationships were equally as important to see in the success for our students. And thank you for cultivating and maintaining those relationships. Also not easy.
I mean, that is huge. And you hear kids from all over the county who talk about being a part of the ACE mentoring program or different alliances. And I know Ms. Johnson-Hussler and I have seen the IT Academy and Puyallup High School just skyrocket with participation. So always appreciate that. Ms. Caulfield?
Um, thank you very much for this presentation. And I'm just going through our website. I went to a couple of our schools and saw what they had, and it is very impressive. Wake Forest High School, they had their construction, and I mean, it really, if anybody knows Bob Villa, I would be totally jealous of what they have up there. Do we have this map? Because I, I agree with Lynn. This is, this map that you wrote out there is very visual, and I think as parents are trying to see what's out there, you do have a list here. You have a long list on our website of what is available. Can we include the map on the website? I think it's a good visual to have.
Absolutely.
I think it's also important to remember that for a lot of those schools, if they're not a magnet program, that concentrator is only available to the students of that base school. So we can't accept a transfer saying like, "I want to go do AOIT at Apex High School, so therefore I need a transfer there." But that is something that's offered to the base population. But if it's a magnet school and they offer, I believe that's open to base and magnet students, which will be helpful in, with the Life Sciences Academy and East Wake in their new magnet program.
It's why part of the multi-year plan also includes how we end up having some sort of academy program at all of our schools.
The other thing I would add that I did not know as a parent is, that's not on the website. So most parents know what they need to get their kid graduated, and that's all you focus on when you're looking at the catalog. I had no idea my own child's high school had so many CTE courses, because you don't look at them because it's not what you need for them to graduate. So that's a piece that I also don't think, we just don't talk about, is we don't tell parents, "Actually, look at the whole course catalog," because there, I mean, hundreds of courses at all of our schools that we don't even really think about as a CTE. And again, three courses makes it a concentrator. And so that's something that I would also say, yes, this is important. But also, every single one of our students at their school has access to a list of courses that they probably don't even know exist in their course catalog, because it's just not how we train our society. We train our society to do the thing, to become a scholar, to be an NC Merit student. Therefore, we never really look at all of the other courses that are available to our students. And also, I didn't know that as a parent, so I think it's not necessarily an academy, but looking at what our schools actually have to offer that can actually change the trajectory of your student and their relationship.
I think that's why it's important that parents actually come in the beginning of the year to do that, because when you go there, you, you get a presentation, and that's where I learned about what our school had. And it's very important, but the audience wasn't, I mean, it was pretty crowded, but I mean, pretty amount of students we would have.
That was horrible. I didn't listen. I didn't know. I mean, seriously, I mean, I'm sure they told me, but I literally just sat in this room before she was at high school and was like, "Wait a minute." So truthfully, right, and you all hear me say this, you have to tell people like me multiple times that something exists for me to actually implement it in my life.
At the right time, too.
Yes, yes. Because if you told me too soon, in fifth grade, I probably wouldn't have paid a close visit. So that's actually another really good point. So just worth saying for us, when we're talking to parents, when we're doing our VACs, is other options to remind parents that there are multitude pathways. Because they're all not getting into the academy.
Right. I mean, the academy has a finite number of students, but that concentrator piece is open and, and has so many options in, in the school.
Yep. And certifications, too.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we will bring this back for you all to do official approval in a couple of weeks. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you. All right. With that, we've only got about 15 minutes until our regular meeting, so let's adjourn. And I'll see, we'll see everybody at 5:30 in the boardroom.
Thank you.